Call to order, 5:30. City of Hazel Park, Special City Council Work- Work Study Meeting, May 6, 2015. Prewill of Agenda.
Sub moving.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, public discussion. Public discussion.
My name is Diane Colvin. I'm a resident of Hazel Park for seventeen years, and I want the pit bull ban repealed. Every dog owner should have the- should have the right to- to have whatever dog they want, as long as they're responsible owners and they're following safety rules.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Courtney Pratt Sanders. I'm a Board Trustee for Michigan's Political Action Committee for Animals, and thank you again for hosting a work study with your residents so that we could discuss this issue. I really appreciate it. So does everyone else who's here. Members of Hazel Park Animal Advocates are here tonight as well, and they're your voting bloc. They are your residents who want to elect humane and compassionate leaders, and so this issue is of great importance to them. I know there's been a lot of discussion from a lot of very passionate groups about this issue, and I'm sure you've been overwhelmed being contacted. I want to assure you personally that those here tonight in support of the ban repeal will conduct themselves professionally and courte- courteously. So as you know, a Hazel Park resident has been diligently reviewing dog bite police reports for the city. She was able to gather data for 2015, 2014, 2013, 2012, and 2009. And she shared that raw data and the supporting charts with council, I believe, via the city manager. And I just want to call out some of the significant findings that should be of concern and things that can be addressed. It should be noted that the findings are as we expected. They are in line with other cities that enacted BSL, showing, once again, BSL doesn't work, it's ineffective, and it did not reduce dog bites. The number of bu- bites reported overall were higher in 2012 and 2013 than in 2009. So that tells us the number of bites went up after the BSL breed-specific legislation was enacted. The percentage of pit bull mix bites reported for 2012, 2013, and 2014 are higher than 2009. So the percentage of pit bull mix bites went up after Hazel Park enacted BSL. Almost all of the breeds on the Breed tab in the document you'll have are labeled as "mix" or "mutt." So the true breed of any dog that is not a registered purebred is questionable. The true breed of the dogs labeled as "mix" or "mutt" involved in these incidents is unknown, and any and all of the dogs can bite regardless of the breed. Regarding location of incident, the majority of dog bites happened outside of the home, over thirty-eight percent. Regarding containment, the majority of incidents involve dogs escaping their yard, over thirty-seven percent. The categories that are labeled "unknown" are a problem. For example, in five reports, the location of the incident is unknown or not included. If someone has been bit, they should know where they were when they were bit, inside the home, in the yard, in public, in someone else's home. In ten reports, how the dog was involved, such as broke its leash, climbed a fence, jumped out the door, is unknown or not included. Breed identification. There are great inconsistencies on the breed reporting. In one report, the officer identified the dog as one breed. The animal control officer identified it as a different breed, and then the owner identified it as a third breed. So which- which one is correct? Regarding whether or not the dogs were neutered or intact, none of the dogs in the police reports were spayed. Only two of the dogs were neutered, thirteen were intact, and thirty-five are unknown. Regarding reason for the bite, fifteen cases were dog-dog aggression, four were accidental, and thirteen were territorial. Some of the police reports were just scratch cases, no bites reported. And I just want to clarify that there's an enormous difference between a scratch and a dog bite. If a dog is being aggressive and it wants to bite, it will bite. So in cases where it's only a scratch that never elevated to a bite, it really is not part of this discussion. In fact, there is one police report that cites the subsequent medical report. In this case, a resident reported a dog bite, but the attending doctor determined it was not a dog bite at all, and the injuries were from a fall. One of the most severe cases required forty stitches to a child's face, and that was from a husky, not a pit bull-type dog. There are no dog bite-related fatalities in Hazel Park. One of the reasons that we're asking you to repeal BSL is because it's an unfair ordinance. It treats some dog owners one way, other dog owners a different way. They own the same property under the law, a canine. The fact that these dog owners are not treated the same is where discrimination comes into play, and that's a problem. For example, in one police report, a pit bull-type dog scratched a child, and the dog was confiscated and killed. Yet in another police report, a beagle caused puncture wounds but was returned to the owner. The causal variables in these bite reports need to be addressed, but you can't effectively accomplish that until you repeal BSL and create an equal playing field for all dog owners. Dogs being hidden because owners are scared they'll be misidentified or labeled as a pit bull cause socialization and behavior issues. These dogs are not getting the exercise they need. They're not getting the medical care they need. And there's a high number of nuisance complaint calls in which neighbor- neighbors are feuding, and so they call on each other to report a pit bull in residence. Near officers don't have time for that nonsense. They have real work to do. So we again urge you to repeal BSL and replace it with a pet owner responsibility ordinance, and we also feel an anti-chaining ordinance will increase public safety in regard to dog bites. We ask you to please vote on this repeal, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes. Your name and-
Hi, my name is Joe Cardona. I've been a resident of Hazel Park since nineteen ninety-two. My wife pretty much grew up here. I've got two pit bulls. I rescued them from a rescue center. I've had them for six years. Just from a personal experience as a dog enthusiast, they're one of the best breeds I've ever owned, and I'm fifty-five years old. I think you guys are losing sight on the real problem here. It's ownership and training and responsibility of the owner. I don't think I should have something taken away from me because of other people's poor decisions and actions. I think you're going after the wrong- the wrong thing here. With that being said, I- I think I should have the right to have any breed of dog I want. I don't think- I think I should be- be applied to under the law as anybody else. My dog is out of line. I'll pay that price, but if you generalize a breed as a nuisance is absurd to me.
Thank you very much.
Hello again. I'm back again, asking also-
What's your name again?
Oh, Alyssa Sullivan. I'm a Hazel Park resident. I spoke last time. I'm back again, also asking that you vote to repeal the ban on pit bulls in Hazel Park. I feel that a generalization of a dog by the way that it looks, as is proven across the board by every- every recognized government agency, animal agency across the nation, is that you can't predict what a dog will do by what it looks like. I've lived in the city, been a homeowner in this city for going on fifteen years. I've always had pit bulls. I've never had a complaint. My dogs are registered, as I said last time. And it is hard to live in a city where you worry that your dogs can be taken from you. They're part of my family, and they're well-behaved, wonderful canine citizens. And I would like to continue owning the breed because I- I feel very passionately that what a dog looks like has nothing to do with how it behaves. And while I- while I feel sorry for people that have had bad experiences with that dog- with that breed, I've had bad experiences with other breeds. It's- to look at one dog and say, "My dog is better than yours," or "My dog deserves more rights than yours," is- is disheartening to me. And as a progressive community, I wish that we could look at a more progressive form of protective legislation than a breed-specific blanket coverage. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Mallory. I'm a CPA. I've had pit bull-type dogs for twelve-plus years. Mallory Crow.
And your address for the record, please?
I'm not a Hazel Park resident.
I'd speak- we- but we always ask everyone-
Okay. Mine's two-nine-five-zero-four, Omenwood, in Farmington Hills.
Thank you.
No, I- there's no ban in Farmington Hills, so I'm not worried. I'm legit. So I just want to bring out a couple of different points I'd like to point out. The first of all, I just want to bring in a couple statistics from verified sources. The dog bite fatalities in 2011 were thirty-two. Pit bulls around that time were around five million, but let's just say there were only a million. That means nine-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty-eight dogs did not have those instances. So that's just one statistic. There are other ones we can go in. But another case study I'd like to bring to you is the idea that a lot of people say pit bulls will snap. There's a switch that goes off. You don't know when they're gonna blow. So I'd like to bring up the Michael Vick dogs that were rescued in 2007, which is eight years ago. There were fifty dogs taken off the property. In those eight years, not one of those dogs has had an instance where they've hurt, bit, scratched anyone. Hector, the pit bull, has been on morning shows. He's been in parades. Johnny Justice goes to elementary schools, and young children read to him. It's fueled up their confidence. He's a certified therapy dog. And there are countless other stories. There's Ray, Lila, Cherry, Squeaker, Handsome Dan, Little Red, Oliver, Georgia, and forty more that you don't see in the news for mauling a child or attacking anybody. These are good stories. And if you'd expect any dog to explode, wouldn't it be a dog born and bred for fighting and taken off of a fighting ring? So I think that's a perfect example of the factors that lead to these horrible instances that we hear about aren't breed. And I went on a Facebook page that was pro BSL, and I was reading things people were saying. I think the most shocking thing to me was I agreed with some of the things people were saying. They want the same things that we want. They don't want dog fighting in their neighborhoods. They don't want dogs as law ornaments. They don't want unethical breeding. And I think all the pit bull supporters here agree with all those three things. And I think those are things that I think everyone can agree on, everyone will support in legislation, not just focusing on one breed, but the actual factors that cause these horrible incidences. In closing, I just want to point out the ban is illogical. It's not point-supported by substantiated statistics, and there are better ways to protect our citizens than having the ban.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Diane Pirak. I don't live in Hazel Park. Do you want my address?
Address for the record, please.
It's four-oh-three-seven-
Name and address, please.
Diane Pirak. Address four-oh-three-seven Waterwell Lane, Bloomfield Hills. My son lives in Hazel Park and has a pit bull mix, and we were very against it from the beginning. We've always had Labradors, and his dog is the most well-behaved dog I have ever seen. And my son takes very good care of his dog. What I am against is that you are not treating the dog breed fairly and the owners of these dog breeds fairly. It's up to the owner to make sure their dogs behave and to take care of their dogs. The lab that we had, one of the dogs we had, which we've never had problems with our dogs before, actually bit his dog. And his dog sat down and just didn't care. I mean, that is how gentle and loving. It's the most loving dog I've ever seen. So I'm just saying, please, let's go after the owners that don't care about their dogs and don't take care of their dogs. Don't get them enough exercise. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else to- Going to close, public comments? Any objections? Any objections to closing? Closing public comments? We have to be discussed, the resolution.
First of all, yes, Madam Mayor, the administration respectfully requests that the city council place before the voters of the city of Hazel Park the planned millage renewal at two-point-eight mils for police protection in the city of Hazel Park. This is supplemental police millage. Again, we are keeping our promise to the voters of the city of Hazel Park. We did look at possibly upping it because of the fact there is a likelihood that due to the defeat of proposal one, that the legislature is going to look at local units of government as a source of revenue. They will make cuts to our funds in order to pay for road improvements. But at this time, the administration would recommend that we keep our promises and that we go to two-point-eight if that does happen. Keep the faith. We do sign a plan. We build a balance position for you next year. And again, it's tight, but it's tight by design. We didn't ask for any more than we absolutely needed, and this puts us on target. And again, it keeps our promise. It's exactly what we said we wanted to do.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the resolution approving the ballot language for a public safety millage renewal of one-eight, which is the two-point-eight mils reduction from nine-point-eight.
Support. So this will be a reduced renewal?
Right.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Have some discussion. I think the way that this was presented was extremely important, and I think the administration did a yeoman's job of presenting it. I think we saw yesterday what happens when citizens don't trust their government. And we said when we were seeking the consolidation with East Point that this would reduce the millage that we had from nine-point-eight to two-point-eight. Subsequent to that, yesterday's highway bill went down in flames, and frankly, I don't trust the state government to not come back and take more money from us in our revenue sharing, and which will again leave us in a precarious situation. However, we said that if this consolidation passed, that we would reduce from nine-point-eight to two-point-eight, and I think it's extremely important that we keep our word on that issue.
Yes.
We can always go to our voters at any time, you know, during the course of this millage, not the other one. The other one is locked in stone for twenty years. But this one, we can always- we can pump it up if we need to. Like I said, right now, we keep our promise. We can balance.
Well, I- I think that- that all bodies, decision-making bodies, could rationalize and say, "Well, we know that something's gonna happen. It's gonna decrease our revenue. So just to expedite things, we'll just make it something else." But I don't think that's the way things are supposed to work. We're supposed to keep our word. We're supposed to do what we have to do to make things balance. If- if things come out the way they look like they might, we will be back, and we will make an argument for the funds that we need. But that has to be up to the public, and we made our promise, and I think we should keep it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. We have budget study session?
Yes, again, we have that before you. We're not going to do a large dog at morning show. I've briefed you all on this. It's very tight. After the consolidation vote took place to give us- and again, it was just a funding consolidation, but it's more so to give us the fourteen mils, which actually was a net gain of only seven mils, remember? Mil for us only generates about one-hundred-and-sixty thousand. It's one of the smallest mils values in the area. So again, we were hit with increases in costs that we cannot control from the pension act. We're allowing patients to help care. So we were able, again, to balance up this year. We are- there are more referrals for health and whistles, and this budget is basically satisfied.
Mayor Precy?
Yes?
I would move that we receive the budget draft for study.
Support.
Support.
And again, if anybody has any questions, feel free to contact me. Feel free to contact us. It's fairly self-explanatory. Again, it's tight, but it is a fair budget. You should be able to meet your demands.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Animal Control Ordinance Work Study Session.
Madam Mayor, again, we've been looking at this in an effort to try to reach what we think might be fair compromise. The administration has met either individually or in groups of two with all of you and with our animal control officer and our city attorney, and we have come up with some recommendations. Do you want to read them, or do you want me to read them?
Well, based upon your comments and the information that we received from a lot of the people that are here tonight, I incorporated the changes into a proposed amended ordinance. That proposed change would allow- would allow pit bulls back into Hazel Park under certain conditions, which is they must be licensed, continually licensed, which has been for all dogs all along. They must also have a behavioral assessment that they're not vicious in writing when they get their application for a license. If they're not spayed or neutered, they will have an annual license, and that annual license fee will increase to twenty dollars. If they are spayed and neutered, then they will take the- they could go up to three years for a license, and that would- that price would remain the same as it is now, which is substantially lower than the twenty dollars. This goes eight-
Twelve dollars.
Eight, twelve, and sixteen respectively for the one to three years. If the dog is spayed or neutered, it could be on a leash. If it's not spayed or neutered, then they would have to also have a muzzle. These were all based upon the comments that were received from these people in the audience, and I think that this is a good proposal that you guys have made, and would ask that you consider adopting this ordinance.
Mayor? Again, important to remember, there are some other things with this as well.
Yeah.
In terms of tethering, and this is no pit bull can be tethered to an inanimate object. Any other breed, they cannot be tethered unless the owner is actually at home and present. The spay and neutering fees for licenses, those are non-breed specific and would apply to all breeds. All breeds must be in a fence that contains the dog, okay, including pit bulls. Pit bulls must have a six-foot fence, okay, but all breeds must have a fence that can contain the dog. So if that dog can get over a four-foot fence, that dog will have to be contained with a six-foot fence, okay? And again, that means the fence must be operable. We refresh folks' memories, too, when we reviewed these ordinances, that again, your screen door must be in good operation. Your screen door cannot be counted on to contain any dog. If your screen door is lax, if it doesn't latch and that dog gets out, you will be prosecuted. We plan to step up enforcement on license- dog licensure for all breeds. All breeds will be licensed. If not, we're going to bring increased fines and penalties to you if those licenses are not. We want, if you're gonna be walking a pit bull, we need you to be sixteen years of age.
We didn't put that in.
Okay.
We- yeah, we said adults.
Adults, adults.
We couldn't- we couldn't get to a certain age.
And the only reason we really looked at that is because maybe as an adult, at least you have some weight behind you to hold back the dog. Because we know some adults are only a hundred pounds, but you're a hundred pounds versus sixty pounds on a child.
Or just the knowledge of the adult on how to handle situations.
Yeah, and how to handle a situation.
In a situation with another dog, yeah.
I think you guys did a great job. Your comments were wonderful.
We- we've gotten rid of most of the breed-specific stuff. There are still some breed-specific language in there. Again, in terms of the behavioral assessments, we want to work with you folks to make some recommendations for us. If you don't like any breed-specific legislation, then I think that you need to work as hard as you can to show this governing body and the people in this community that we have not decreased our safety by repealing this ban, okay? There's- I agree with many of the things that you said, Joe, your comments, but one thing that I have to take exception to is after the- or it's not after the ordinance was enacted, but after we adopted enforcement procedures to actually enforce the ban, there was a dramatic decrease in all dog bites and a dramatic decrease in the number of pit bull bites. So there were aspects of this ban that were certainly working. So I want that to be noted as well for the record, that the ban actually was pretty much doing its job. On the other hand, there were compelling stories, and again, maybe not the compelling story- the story that you thought was so compelling, because we're much more familiar with that story, but there were other compelling stories that I received in my office, like a young man who had a pit bull that was a service dog, desperately wanted to be in Hazel Park, couldn't be in Hazel Park because we didn't have any provision whatsoever to admit the new pit bull. That was a compelling story, okay? A young family with a new puppy that didn't close on their home because we didn't allow it. That was a compelling story. One that was making its way around Facebook and the internet, and we were quiet on that. We didn't want to get into, forgive my language, a pissing contest with anybody, but it wasn't so compelling and it wasn't presented so accurately as perhaps it should have been. So we've tried to be fair. We've tried to be open, and we've listened. So that's our recommendation. Again, may not be a hundred percent of what you wanted, but it is certainly we've met you more than halfway.
But we didn't- we did look at the side of it where the pit bulls are maybe a little more aggressive when they're not spayed or neutered.
And we-
Okay, and there has been proven fact to that. So we'd rather have the dogs-
Right.
-properly maintained that way. It's safer for the dog and as well as the owner.
And we did have one- the other thing, too, and this is critically important, too. This is one more recommendation that we're gonna be in there, is that you have to have- you have to have homeowner's insurance or renter's insurance. And the landlord has to have insurance as well, because if we do have a tragedy, we want to make sure that
Victims taken care of.
That the victims can pay. We don't want- they can recover, pardon me, that the- those responsible can pay and the victims can recover.
Right.
So, but the key thing here that we want to work with you folks on is the behavioral assessment. We're open to suggestions on that. We're open to you guys making suggestions as to who you think should provide them. Do you want to provide them? Do you have expertise on this? Okay, we're not trying to create an onerous hurdle for folks to clear, but we want to make sure that we've done something, make sure that we don't have a vicious dog here, okay? I think that- I think these are reasonable, expect- they're reasonable expectations and requirements. We've moved a lot, okay? We now need you to cooperate with us and help us on behavioral side.
We are fair?
Literally.
Yes.
What's that? Okay, so I do- I do see nodding heads. I do see happy faces.
Mr. Klobuchar?
But-
I'd like to leave one other comment. I don't know if you touched on this. We do also repeal the limitation on the numbers kept.
No, we're- we still have three- three dogs.
What that did is that provided a grandfather's clause-
Right.
-back in nineteen eighty-eight, that if you had more than three, that you were able to keep them in there. Well, all those dogs or cats have passed away by now, so we didn't need that anymore.
It doesn't really quite read like that.
No, but that's just- that's just how-
That's what it was. So that's why we repealed that section.
We- everybody, any dog and cat that was alive in nineteen eighty-eight, we're assuming is deceased. I mean, I did have a cat, though, that lived to be, you know, twenty-five, so
Well, you can prove who's had your- your dog or cat since nineteen eighty-eight or before five.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I would- I would just like to make a couple of comments. I really appreciate all the input that we had, that- that for me specifically, I didn't know about dog assessment. I didn't know about a lot of these things until it was brought to my attention. The thing that I did know about were children getting hurt and what we can do about that. And my philosophy was if you're gonna err between children getting hurt and someone's right to own a dog, I'm gonna err on the side of the children getting hurt. But I think this- actually, I'm- I'm real pleased with the way this came out, and I asked a question of a lady, and I don't know exactly who it was- An owner responsible, and to have us be one that has taken a lot of this into consideration, I feel sort of proud about what we've come up with. And of course, this is all dynamic, and based on what happens, it's just this...
She got me.
The statistics for what happens in the future will, you know, modify this or not modify it if it works. So I appreciate all the input, and I thank the input from our legal staff and the administration and all of the council people. Job well done.
Madam Preise?
Yes?
I also have been educated, and I was glad to absorb the material presented to us. It was, well, I'm an animal lover, and I didn't like the breed-specific features that we had before. I think what we're doing now is ever so much more reasonable and more fair to everyone concerned. And I appreciate the passion on both sides of the issue. If someone has been attacked and it happened to have been identified as a pit bull that did the attack, that person for sure wants to keep the breed-specific part. But the changes that we have made or that have been recommended that we make, I think will protect the public adequately and still allow for people to keep the animals that they love. And I know that animals are family members, and we understand that, I think all of us up here do. And with that, Madam Preise, I would move that we adopt the ordinance as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
That's on first reading, right?
Yes.
We still have to bring them back one more time.
We are fair and safe.
I guess some discussion I'd like to say.
Yes?
We all listened to our animal patrol officer, and we had her in all our, in the interviews up here, and we listened to what some of her comments was, as well as, I contacted a couple of shelters and people that were more maybe in tune with different breeds and at different stages of their life, and got some information that way as well. So there's different, we all do our own little way of homework to find a reasonable solution. But the, you know, this solid working, you know, we want your help to do the analysis. We want our animal patrol officer, she's really good at that, but she could always use some help.
We have a lot of volunteers, though.
Yes, we have a lot of volunteers.
We have one lady, it's four days a week she does this.
Yes.
Yes.
And again, we have worked to find homes for well over 90% of the pit bulls that we have taken off the streets. So again, we, like I said, we hope that, you know, your part, continue to be part of the solution, because we are going to, like I said, require the behavioral assessment. So I would hope that you will make some recommendations for us so that we can...
And the first, the reason the ban really got put in place, because we didn't have the education, nobody came up as a group like this to inform us as to what we could do and why, and then when we did make some changes, and nobody wanted, they thought it was a joke and never followed them, and then we put the ban in place. Now, hey, that got everybody's attention then. Now we got everybody here, two years later, and making the proper changes. It may have taken extreme measure, but we actually got a good comprehensive working order plan with the cooperation of the community is what we want.
And again, if you don't want the ban back, work with us to make this work.
We don't want the ban back. We just want to make this work.
Work with us to make this work.
You can...
Yeah, one more time, it's up to you, Madam Mayor.
Other comments?
Okay, you're okay? You're okay?
I'm just really happy about the tethering part.
Yeah, we all feel good about that one.
Exaction, adjournment? Good?
You need an exaction? You want one? I don't need an exaction.
Do you want us to see this again?
Support.
I don't need an exaction.
We're done. Andy, move, made a motion to adjourn, man.
All right, all right. Go.
Stay at the adjournment.
You don't have this wire.